Feel free to fill out the sign-in sheet at any point, even after we're done. Speaker cards, I need them as quickly as you can.
Is there a representative here from the council office?
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Are you ready?
Yeah, Robert and I are here.
Well, in that case, why don't we go ahead and get started? Good morning, everyone. It is approximately 9:40 a.m., July 12, 2013. And this is a scheduled public hearing for City Planning Commission case number 2011-3128, GPAA, ZCHD. The environmental document is case number E&amp;B, 2011-3129M&amp;B. The project address is 2520 through 2668 Northeastern Avenue. The proposed project. The proposed project is the construction of a charter elementary school, approximately 530 students, 45,388 square feet in size with 31 classrooms and a height of approximately 44 feet. Additionally, a 20-unit multiple-family residential structure with a height of approximately 44 feet 10 inches. And lastly, a 2,363 square foot commercial space, a cafe, approximately 22 feet in height. 82 parking spaces are proposed. The school and residential parking will be located within a podium garage, which basically means a shared garage underneath. And the commercial parking for the cafe will be located at grade or surface adjacent to the cafe. The subject site is currently vacant. It is a hillside lot, approximately 212,750 square feet in size. And the current zoning on that parcel is QR1-1B and QRD6-1B. There are 20 trees that are proposed to be removed from the site. The actions that the city planning commission will be considering are as follows. The first is a general plan amendment to the Northeast Neighboring Plan from low residential to neighborhood commercial. The second is a zoning height district change from QR1-1B and QRD6-1B to RAS3-1. Lastly, the city planning commission will consider adopting the associated environmental document. This case is currently scheduled to be before the city planning commission on Thursday, August 8, 2013. The city planning commission meeting is a public meeting as well. Their meetings start at 8:30 in the morning. They will have multiple cases on their agenda, so we have no idea where this case will be on that agenda. They normally meet on the dirt floor in this building in the public works room. But all of that will be sent to you if you fill in the sign-in sheet. What will happen after today's hearing, I am the hearing officer. I will go out, examine the site, review the environmental case file, any comments that have come in, and comments have come in and I'm sure some will be submitted today. I will put all of that information and I will be putting together a recommendation report to present to the city planning commission at their August 8 meeting. That means that there is no decision being made here at today's meeting. This is not a decision meeting. I am assigned to legally conduct this public hearing on behalf of the city planning commission. The day of the city planning commission meeting, they will probably allow additional public testimony. It is customary for them to do that. So if you don't get a chance to speak today, you'll have an opportunity to speak directly to the commission at their August 8 meeting. If there's information that you'd like to submit or, you know, folks who couldn't make it today and they want to submit information, they can submit that information to me if they give it to me within the next couple of weeks. But they can also send it directly to the city planning commission office, send it directly to them. And I would probably still recommend that you get that information to them as quickly as you can so that they will have time to review it before the August 8 meeting. That's a lot. I have a little legal stuff I want to read here. And then we'll explain how a public hearing will be conducted. The city planning commission meeting will be a public meeting. The commission may permit limited additional public testimony on this case. But today's hearing is established to meet the legal notice of hearing requirements prior to the commission taking in action. If anyone wishes to submit additional information to the commission or take exception to the staff report or recommendations in that report, they should do so in writing prior to the commission meeting. Information about the date, time, and location of the commission meeting along with instructions about where to communicate communications will be provided on the cover sheet of the staff report. So, for today, what will happen is, first we will hear from the applicant or the applicant's representative. They're just going to give me an overview of the project and what they are asking for. Then, once they are done, I will begin calling the public speaker cards. There are no other cases scheduled for today, so please feel free to... As long as you want, please just keep in mind that you're directing the comments to me and I will be taking notes. We won't be conducting a question-and-answer session. However, I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the process, not the case, but the process. Just direct your comments to me, please, and keep in mind that there are a lot of folks who want to speak today and we want to give everybody an opportunity. If there are speaker cards still out there, just today's date and your name is all I need. Just bring it on up to me.
Okay, buenos dias. Los acaba de escuchar Linda, ella es la oficial que está escuchando hoy el testimonio. Normalmente tengamos que citar un poquito de este proceso. Hoy es una audiencia, hoy no se va a tocar ni una decisión. Lo que ustedes que este caso lo va a escuchar la comisión de la ciudad, de calificación de la ciudad. Y antes de que vayamos a esta audiencia aquí al central, ellos son los que toman la decisión. Hoy lo que está haciendo Linda es que está escuchando todos los testimonios. Ella después de que escuche todos los comentarios, ella va a escribir un reporte haciendo su recomendación. Si hoy usted siente que, you know, dijo su comentario pero le quiere decir más cosas o quiere entregar algo por éxito, Linda contestaba recomendando es que se lo den a ella pero también a la comisión. Y yo tengo aquí mis tarjetas, si alguien quiere más información de cómo submeter sus comentarios a la comisión o a Linda, yo les voy a dar información, les voy a dar correo electrónico, el número de fax, y lo que se llama fax para ustedes. Otras cositas, perdón. Después de esta audiencia, la audiencia grande que se va a escuchar en la comisión es el 8 de agosto. Y normalmente estas preguntas empiezan a las 8:30. Y lo que ustedes como, ellos tienen diferentes casos que aceptar, entonces se les recomienda que lleguen ahí como a las 8:30, pero no quiere decir que este caso se va a escuchar es ahora. También, este, cuando seamos hoy, Linda recibiendo los comentarios, quiere que por favor te lo dedican a ella, ella va a estar tomando notas. Lo que va a pasar, Linda, es que los personas que están proponiendo este proyecto van a hacer su presentación y luego después ustedes van a poder decir todos sus comentarios. Linda acaba de decir que, perdón, no hay un límite, no hay un límite en comentarios. Usted puede decir todo lo que quiera decir. Nomás, por favor, todo en cuenta que hay muchas personas, ¿verdad?, ahora que quieren decir sus comentarios. Ustedes que nomás tomen eso en cuenta. También, si hoy tienen preguntas sobre el proceso, Linda con mucho gusto los puede contestar. Ella no puede contestar a preguntas específicamente del proyecto, pero si tienen preguntas sobre el proceso, ella con mucho gusto las puede contestar para ustedes. Y se me hace que esto, alguien tiene alguna pregunta?
That, is the applicant's representative here? Good morning. You're welcome to come up and sit here or if you want to stand up just so everybody can hear.
Sure.
Just introduce yourself and...
So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you for your time. My name is Erin Morales and I'm here on behalf of City Terrace LLC and Reformer Construction and Development. This is my colleague Pedro Montenegro, who is our architect on the job and who will be giving an overview of what it is that we are proposing to build at Eastside Lombardi. That being said, I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Pedro to give a description on what we're proposing to build.
I'm sorry, you're listening? Yes, I am Pedro Montenegro. I am an engineer on the front, which is responsible for the design of the project. I will describe the project a little bit. Our project is on the corner of Lombardi and Eastern. We have an entrance, a main entrance to the parking area located on Eastern Avenue. And we have a circle court, half a circle, and we have driveways leading to the parking on the right and to the school to the left. The slope of this driveway is about 15%. So, also we have a exterior stair that leads to the school and we have a handicap ramp that goes through landscape area. The parking area that serves the school and the units, and the housing units, is mostly underground. And we have, at the back of this development, we have, so at the front we have elementary school. We have two levels of elementary school. And at the back we have the 20 housing units, which are buffered by landscape. We have a very much detailed landscape presented that basically tried to preserve some of the trees, shrubs, and bushes and incorporate new planting, which is mostly California lemon. To the left, we have another driveway that is 15% slope, 20 feet wide, that leads to the truck parking of the school. This is the highest level of the school, which is elevation 500. Approximately at the entrance, at the eastern level of the, at the level of the pavement of Eastern is about 440. We are having a school courtyard, which is going to be a garden too. And this is the hillside development, let's say. On over Lombardi, facing Lombardi, we have a community cafe, which is all parking. And on the right side, we have, I'm showing this one. We will have a garden area with chairs and landscaping, flat area for use of the people who will come to the community cafe. And we have some green features like an infiltration basin here, which will collect the water coming from the hillside and infiltrate. The project show is a mixed use that consists of a elementary school, where the main campus is here at elevation 500, and then they have another level below. This area is elevating with respect to the units. And I'm going to show a section. So this section shows the level of the school related to the units that are below. And as you can see here, most of the parking is underground. And this is below the level that is flat right now. So there is a flat area.
Now, there's no questions?
So we have the site down, and there's some views here. Show the entrance. We have incorporated some recommendations for planning for the signage, for pedestrian accessibility. This shows the community cafe. We have a parking for bicycles. Also, we have parking for bicycles in the underground parking, selected parking for electric vehicles, hybrid vehicles. This is a view of the housing units from the interior core. This is a partial view of the school from an area above the street. More information was already given about the size, the number of units. We will do, we propose landscaping, green features also related to the landscaping, buffers around the buildings. Basically, a green envelope around the street.
Could you just let me know, approximately how much grading is being proposed?
The grading is, I think it's in the situation, about 59,000. Yeah, 59,500.
Okay, I don't have any, any questions at this time about the project. Once we finish the testimony, if you would like, we provide some additional testimony or some other information, you will have an opportunity to leave it up. So, thank you. We'll go ahead and move into the public comment portion.
So, ahorita ya nos vamos a mover a la parte de comentarios públicos. Les acabo de decir, Linda, es que después de que todos digan sus comentarios, los representantes que están aquí del proyecto van a poder contestar o hacer otra presentación si les gusta para poder contestar cualquier pregunta que ustedes tengan durante su testimonio.
I'm just going to call your name and please, wherever you're sitting or standing, feel free to just keep from there, just loud enough so I can hear you and slow enough that I can take notes. The first speaker card I have is Dr. Tom Williams. Good morning. Anywhere you like, really. No microphones, you're all on, so.
You're all.
You're, okay, you're all.
Basically, don't send it to the planning commission, continue it. Because there's a lot of issues that are involved in this. A lot of drawings are not available to the people. There's a lot of things. By the way, does anyone know that this hilltop is 80 feet above the surrounding roads? 80 feet. They've already demolished a residential structure on the site. They've been doing, filling and grading over on the south side of the site. And this is an extension of the commercial zone, as they call it. It's not a transition. The transition already occurs on the east side of Eastern, between Gambier and Lombardi. So the transition, there's only four businesses along from Lyndale down to Lombardi. So the transition from commercial, which is intense commercial along Eastern, to residential has already been made. Adding more cafes, there's an existing cafe, not more than about 400 feet away from the proposed cafe. So there's already a neighborhood cafe there. My concern is also the transportation and circulation. This is a highway and there's a blind spot, everybody knows it. And people lose control and there are accidents on that blind spot going into a traffic light.
This is along Eastern?
On Eastern. We already have recommended that they put in right-turn lanes and right-turn out lanes, but those aren't involved, that I've been able to find out. So we're quite concerned about this. Basically, don't send it to the planning commission. Elsewise, you're just going to have a lot of problems at that stage. Continue it for at least 30 to 60 days so that we can work with the applicant to see if there's any way that we can increase the residential, but not the commercial. Because everything surrounding it is residential right now. Recreation across the street, this cafe, 2,000 square foot, it's hardly even worth worrying about. I think it's a bad project. We don't know a lot about it. We don't know what the grading plan is. Any mitigated negative declaration? Don't certify it, don't recommend it to be certified. Because most of the mitigation is, well, applications or plans will be submitted to the city and the city will approve it and thereby it's mitigated. So that's not real mitigation. There's a lot of things wrong in it. I've only submitted a one-page summary. And both, by the way, they don't know that this is going to be a detour route for Bureau of Engineering when they start demolishing this other street bridge. And we don't even know what they're going to do and when they're going to do it on that. So I'd hate to have this as the Huntington detour at the same time that they start the construction. Please either continue it or deny it.
Thank you so much. The next speaker card I have is Anna Medina. I'm here hoping more can be done.
I'm against this project because I don't think this is going to bring something meaningful to me. And I wait out a little too many schools. And then cafes, we have already, we've set a table of opportunities for the visitor and they're not doing well. And then the other aspect is, are they going to do more for the officers because of this project? Is it going to give it for sure?
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Yoli Garcia.
Good morning, good morning. I am a resident of Encino, also a member of the Encino Historical Society. And here as a resident, opposed to these happening, I'm opposed to the notion of asking for you to consider to consider denying that this keeping it the way it is residentially used. We know, as mentioned, we already have schools along Eastern. We have a middle school, we have Farnell. Eastern is also used for the leaders to go to Boston High School. It's already contested. Looking at the environmental case study, there are a lot of issues responding to these. There could be air pollution, there could be more parking issues, there's always, you know, going cars and lights. For the, I live nearby this project. I love seeing the open space, that's what Encino is all for. Having a project at this scale, it's going to stand out because, as mentioned, this is a residential area for the most part. The size of the school and the park is residential, park is a low residential.
I have a question in regards to the zoning, the zoning that they're requesting. My understanding is the zoning they requested is RAS3, which is for apartments, multiple dwellings, childcare, and limited rent for the commercial. And the classification for schools, I believe it's R4, yet they're not asking for R4 zoning. So how does the charter school come into RAS3?
Basically, I'm not, I'm not going to get into zoning, but just in general, the charter school being a private school is allowed by right in the RAS3s.
Something I want to clarify, okay? Because the way R4 is saved for schools, so it's a charter school, not a public school. My fear about this rezoning is that once it's restored, it's private land. Pretty much even though we're presenting this, it doesn't mean this is going to be the end product. Okay, on the corner of property division, there's a great apartment complex with a charter center. I, I understand, when I thought, but then I said, that's an RAS3. That's probably what we're going to end up getting on the hillside. And that's an isolated community art. Like I said, we have open space. Residents in Encino love that open space, you know, for the sales on the road. We would like to keep it low residential as much as possible. And then I have another concern with the grading. 59, 59,500 cubic yard, that's a lot of dirt that's going to be removed. That's, you're talking about, what's that, 125 truckloads a day of dirt being removed? That is a lot. You know, we don't need, we don't need that in our communities. So if possible, please deny the zoning.
Thank you so much. Next speaker is Esmeralda. Next speaker is Esmeralda Venida, I'm so sorry, I can't...
So, hello everyone, my name is Esmeralda Valverde, and I ten of California Baptist, I'm a freshman, this year, sophomore. I would just like to comment on everything that everyone's saying, that I am for the project. I think that this will, not only benefit my school, but I think this will benefit the community in the way that it will offer more opportunities for parent classes, and this will be a different schooling program, that they will be able to see as if we have like blocks, and things like that. I think this would be a great opportunity for the community, and I know some people are against it, but I think I should really, like, look, I think I should really think about it again, because it could open up a lot of opportunities for the community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, thank you, here in Office of Smith, appreciate you taking the testimony this morning. Thank you, everybody, really happy to be here. I am Cory Navarre, representing the California Charter Schools Association, and wanted to come here today, and to be too clear to speak in favor and in support of this project. I think it's very unique, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the community. I understand there are a lot of questions about the actual project, I just want to encourage the community to know that there are over two hundred charter schools throughout Los Angeles, and they've been able to successfully integrate themselves into the communities that they serve. And in the beginning, you know, it's always a little bit difficult, because it is new, it's a new project, there's a lot of questions, but ultimately, as a young lady said, or a family, as a student, our kids need more high-quality educational opportunities. People say education is the great equalizer, and it really is. This community needs education opportunities that are going to put kids on track to go to college, and that is really what our interest is as the California Charter Schools Association.